Hi, I'm Sabrina Lemmons. I am a four-year resident of Roundup. I am a veteran who served in the United States Marine Corps and the United States Navy. And, um, let's see, the lifelong question. I've decided to run for the school board. Uh, now my second time because I still don't think the children are the ones being served by the representation of the school board. I still think there is a power issue with the school board as opposed to the children being the primary focus. Let's see, um, I, part of the reason I chose to run for the school board is because of my own childhood and coping with school, um, which was really good for me. I love school, I enjoyed it, I had great teachers. And as a person who went to college later in life after my first enlistment and again after my second enlistment, I learned that, um, the education system across the United States has gotten watered down. I basically got a college education in high school because our teachers challenged us, pushed us, and helped us grow as people. Um, instead of just entertaining us and babysitting us during the school day. And for those of us who are concerned where I grew up, I grew up in New York State, in Orange County. A lot of people are like, "Oh, New York City," no, not New York City. Um, but it was the New York before the 21st century, so, um, I had the benefit of being brought up by people who fought for civil rights. I grew up in the laps of Holocaust survivors. I grew up around immigrants who came here for a better life. I grew up around people who, much like the Montanans of today, have the ancestors that traveled to be here so they can now claim the third, fourth, and fifth generation Montanans. So, New York was the gateway to American citizenship and how Montanans got where they are today, so I'm finally here. Uh, the short answer of my duties would be to be available for the community. And that means everybody, the kids, the parents, teachers, prospective residents, whatever it takes to communicate and keep the lines of communication open and make sure we all have the same goals. As far as the actual duties of the school board, I'm sure knowing all the rules and regulations of the school board will be very important for the schools, the elementary, and the combined middle and high school. As a person who substituted in the schools, I know the substitutes don't have any guidelines to go by, so I'm guessing since the school board is regulated by the state, there should be some regulations. Um, and hopefully, as a school board member, maybe we can get a small list of rules and regulations for substitutes and basic training for them. Because after all, don't we want our substitute teachers to look professional? We don't want them coming in, you know, dressed like they, you know, aren't to be respected like teachers should be. Teachers should be respected. They are the ones who are there with the children during the day. Even if we don't like our teachers, we need to respect them. They've gone through the training and education, um, to be where they are, and they're trying to be there. And if they're there, that means they wanna be, so they deserve the respect for their skills and abilities. Again, not everybody maybe is meant to be there, but that's, um, that's neither here nor there right now, that's a case-by-case basis. But we have to trust who we have our children around all day. And, um, somebody's probably watching, say, "Oh, she doesn't have children." No, I don't have children of my own. I raised my brothers and sisters, I have nieces and nephews, and I've helped raise other people's children, babysit children, uh, working in schools. I chose to serve my country in lieu of having a family after 9/11, so, so that's the kid answer for anybody who's wondering. But as far as when I see how people's children are treated, I still am a very protective person. I don't like children being disrespected either. They have to be respected for their own person and their individuality. For example, I was, uh, in the school system one year and I saw some kids didn't have lunch money. So I had a yard sale, I raised money for the charities for, in the community. And I let the people at the yard sale choose where the money would go. So not a lot of money was raised, but I sent the letter and the money to the elementary school for the lunches. And I sent a letter saying, "Hey, here's the money, it's not a lot, but maybe you could start a program for children who can't afford their lunches and, you know, start and get it moving." And I said, "We could call it Liam's Lunch." And I thought it was a nice colloquial name from my European friends. Uh, but anyway, uh, and I never heard back if the program was started. I never got a thank you note for the donation. They cashed the check, but I never knew what happened to the money or if the program was started. So manners, common courtesy, respect, honoring the wishes of the community, big thing. And money, sadly, is important. And I was at a school board meeting when somebody was donating, uh, fifty thousand dollars. Good chunk of money to start a girls' flag football team. And I was excited, I'm like, "Wow, finally, girls' sport is getting money for themselves, not having to claw for the money out of everybody else's money." And somebody's generosity was already being, I hate to use the word targeted, but fifty thousand dollars, if it failed, anything left over, they were looking to collect the difference and put it to the other sports already. They haven't even gotten the sport off the ground and a leadership person was, um, looking to put that money elsewhere already. So it made me wonder at that time how hard they were really gonna try to get a girls' sports team off the ground. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that really shakes out because, not just because I am a woman, but, um, it's time women got the respect that they deserve, no matter how young they are. Um, and they deserve to have their money spent responsibly. And, you know, girls need educations too, so I think that, um, I think I'm trying to think if I answered that question. But yeah, there's just so much accountability, um, because children, children, they have, you have a duty to them beyond the education. How we carry and conduct ourselves is how what children see. They live what they learn. So if they see our school board, our teachers, their leadership in the schools aren't acting fiscally responsible, morally responsible, ethically responsible, list goes on and on, then, you know, how are they gonna carry themselves when they go out in the world? Are we gonna be proud of the person they say they are when they go, "Oh, I'm from Roundup, Montana." And, you know, we wanna be proud of those kids when they go out into the world and make their mark and, you know, can say where their hometown, and they're proud to say they're from Roundup instead of just saying, "Oh, I'm from Montana." That's a lot of ground to cover, so I think they should be proud of where they're from. Small towns have a great opportunity to be fertile grounds for growth, for children, and a place for them to come home when they're done exploring the world, so I think we own that.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So when you did your donation for the elementary school and the lunch money, right? Let's assume you got on the school board and somebody gave a donation, five dollars, fifty dollars, whatever it is. How would you have handled that? Now being on the other side, right?
No, I, I, I'm one of those weirdos that love thank you notes. Simple thank you note, even if the program didn't get off the ground, whatever, just a simple acknowledgement. Not just of the money, for in my case, I'll use an example because you never know how or why that person got the money. Took me time. I spent two days on the weekends setting up, tearing down, out in the heat. So, you know, maybe somebody got it in their, it was a Lotto ticket or grandma sent the money, something. And, you know, they said, "You know what? I don't need this fifty dollars, I can put it towards something my community needs." So regardless of how they got the money, there was a moment in time they could've kept it to themselves or they could've shared it, and they chose to share it. So honoring that graciousness, that selflessness, in a small little note card is the easiest thing anybody can do. And there's even books on how to do it, so, um, you know, and our children, you know, mean a lot. And I, you know, it doesn't all have to come from money, but when money is involved, maturity and fiscal responsibility, I think, are really important.
What would that build? Just sending a thank you note? If you were on the school board and a thank you note was sent, what do you think that would build?
It would build trust, respect, um, open lines of communication. Um, and I think that person would be like, "Oh my God, it was five dollars, it was fifty dollars." That, you know, that is so much more than, you know, I was just giving the money because I wanted to help, you know? Like when we fundraise for vet organizations, people don't have to give. They may be buying a raffle ticket or something, but they don't have to. But they choose to, and when they choose, that act, it's a, it's a moment of respect and honor. Okay, needs in our school district, regardless of what we call it, is still gonna go back to the people. And the people are our children and the humans all involved. Communication, um, and I don't mean just, "Hey, this is when the meeting is, this is your schedule." I mean actual communication and seeing the individual child. Yes, it's a school, we don't have time to go through each child's history or what their dreams and desires are because they do change. But if we start in the elementary school and say, "Hey, Suzie, Tommy, George, Mary, who are you? You know, hey, what are your interests? You know, firefighter, you know, coal miner, President of the United States, whatever." Because if children don't dream about anything, then what are we serving them for? What, what are we helping prepare them for? So when you understand where the kids are coming from, what, what they're looking at, how they see their world, then we can help them attain their goals. Yes, they still have to learn curriculum, great, but what are you helping teach that curriculum? If you're gonna teach a science class, you have to teach it from a perspective. You can't just go, "Oh, this is salt, this is water, you mix them together, you get saltwater," and all the monotonous tone of speaking. You go, "Hey, if you're a firefighter and you use water on these elements, like magnesium, it's gonna make the fire worse, so you don't wanna use water, you know, because it'll do this," and maybe show a video since using it in the classroom wouldn't be, and the kids can see that, that'd be great. You know, um, if you take it from a perspective of drinking water, because we hear so many times that corporations don't care that they've polluted our drinking water. So if you take water and show how it's filtered naturally and how it becomes clean by what nature provides, again, you're inter, you're engaging a child. I substituted in a fifth grade class where they were talking about, I think, volcanoes or something. And, you know, I let the kids do a little bit of the research and answer the questions instead of me telling them. I believe if you ask a child a question, you'll not only give them an opportunity to shine, you'll get them confident, you'll get them to the point where they go, "Oh, my opinion matters, my input matters." And it should matter, even if they're wrong, who cares? They had the confidence to speak up. That is not a, a moment for us to slam them and make them feel like they're not important or just because they are wrong that they should crawl under their desk. And when I was substituting in the elementary school, after classes were over, I walked around to look at the art in the classrooms through the windows, didn't go in the classrooms. I was chastised for walking around and looking at the kids' art because I wanted to know where the kids coming from, how did they express themselves? Even if the project is the same old thing, a puppy dog or whatever picture they had to draw, how each child draws their thing, creates their thing, the color they use shows the child. So I walked around to see what the kids were doing. And I was chastised for doing so. I'm like, they're like, "Well, we have problems with theft in the school." And I'm like, "My hands are empty, I'm not stealing anything, I'm not going in the classrooms." First of all, I didn't know it was, you know, wrong to walk around the school. Again, no rules, I was a substitute, I wasn't told I wasn't allowed to rock around the school. I wasn't told there was a theft problem. But that adult implied, in so many words, that it was the children who were stealing. And I was like, mm, yeah, children have a tendency to take things, yes. Stealing, I thought, was interesting because who has better access all day than adults? And, you know, so I was like, "So you're accusing me of walking around, then you're accusing the children, and then I'm confused because I'm like, what am I doing wrong again?" Again, no rules for the substitutes, no guidelines, no handbook, nothing. But I was like, "Wow, if I wasn't an honest person and had integrity and knew who I was, I probably would've felt stepped on at that moment." But I felt bad for that person at the moment who, um, was trying to paint me with a certain brush. And I see children in the schools being painted with certain brushes, and maybe people don't realize they're doing it. I give them that much, but at the same time, if you're not evaluating your own behavior, how do you know that's how it's being received? There's an old saying that says, um, "I don't think you understood what I said or heard what I said." Basically, the, the, something got lost in translation. And if the kids aren't hearing us the right way, seeing us the right way, then they're not getting the right message, and then they're going out into the world with the wrong language, wrong, wrong message, you know? "This is a spoon." "Oh, no, it's not a spoon, that's a pitchfork." Again, what we call things, how we treat them, is important. And, you know, there's a saying, I think, I can't remember exactly how it went, but, you know, "When a child dies, a lot of hope dies." And it doesn't have to be a corporal death. When a child dies inside, there goes their hope, their light goes out. And, you know, they don't have any ambitions. And I love seeing the light in children's eyes. They're, the way they're proud to be who they are, their, their goals, their aspirations. Um, and not just in the classroom, I run into them in the community and, um, you know, the ones that wanna go to cosmetology school, the ones that wanna be carpenters. And they're not all boys, they're not all girls, you know, they're, they wanna create, they wanna do. And I'd like to see from elementary school, if not prior, that we start seeing the kids. When we see the kids and know who they are, it makes our job easier. Hey, I don't wanna mention bad stories, but, you know, we all, we all don't come from wonderful backgrounds and, um, we have parents that have difficulties and challenges. And, um, the kids therefore inherit a part of that difficulty and challenge. And even if it's only one time, like say, you know, mom and dad had a fight, the kid didn't know how to handle it, there should be somebody at the school, that child, even if it's not their teacher or the school counselor, whatever, the gym teacher, whoever, that they can go, "You know what? Mom and dad had a fight this morning, they were loud," and the teacher or person needs to be able to say, you know, "I see you, I hear you," and learn how to pull that information out because it might just be a little, "Hey, you forgot to get milk that morning." But the next time they come to you and they have a bruise or whatever, you go, "Oh." You know, like I said, there's so much a child can tell you if you listen. And I think our community, our school board, needs to listen to the children. Because I think we have some really great kids and, you know, um, some people, oh, some people like take credit for their kids' accomplishments, "Oh, my kid did this, my kid did that," that's great. But they're your kids, but did you really do all that? You know, your child still has to make choices. And if you teach them how to make choices, not the right choices, not the wrong choices, how to make choices, then they're gonna make good choices and go, you know, good or bad, we still have to take responsibility for our choices, you know? I could've not gone back on active duty, but I chose to. I could've said I did my time, but, you know, I went back on active duty because my country needed me. So children need to know that, "Oh, I can get that candy or I can get that apple, what's gonna serve me better?" You know, so teaching them how to make the choices is going to help them communicate, help them feel confident in the world. Still, I'm sorry, I still keep going back to the children, I just, I can just feel in my heart that, um, I don't think we're doing enough for our children, much like the school layouts, security, um, I still, I don't know, I, my military training has me think of scenarios, safety, perimeter, um, security, things like that. And when I try to imagine, you know, what I could do to protect children throughout the day, I don't think we're doing enough. And some of it might have to do with money, but some of it still comes back to leadership showing that they're gonna have the teachers' backs, that they're gonna make sure that good behavior, respect, um, is honored and expected. And that's another thing, maybe we need more expectations, not just that they get As, Bs, or Cs, or that they attend math class or go to gym, but expectations for character. I, like I said, the way I grew up, character was so important. How you treated people was important, no matter whether you liked them or not, respect, courtesy. I had a crossing guard when I went to one of my schools. Mr. Don Mitchell retired from the Army, worked at a local, um, boys', um, military academy. And eighty years old out there crossing guard, 'cause he wanted to serve his community. Um, and he was nothing but respectful to the kids, even the hooligans. And he just showed them that he loved them. And, um, just by being there, complimenting them, sharing a part of their day for that split second that he had them. You know, second they stopped while cars stopped, you know, so, um, I still think there's a lot our children can teach us if we listen. So what we need to do in the community is get, get to that point where the parents heal, hear, feel heard. And we can hear them, they don't feel like they're an afterthought in our community because when something bad happens, the first thing they do is, "Oh, what did the parents do?" But if the school board isn't supporting the parents in what, what they want for their children and what needs to happen, you know, the parents are gonna be the first one blamed. But if the school board keeps trying to drive wedges between the family, the community, the kids, like there's some kind of an indoctrination program, then, you know, we're gonna have a community locally, statewide, and nationally that are, are not people that, you know, can handle the world. One thing I realized, uh, I was watching a, a show, I don't remember what it was, but it's not important. But what I realized, the difference between programming now and programming when I was growing up, is they showed, like, the bills, like, money was important. Now, uh, like, I'll leave it to Beaver, they would talk about if something happened, "Oh, it cost that much, it's gonna be, you know, what are you gonna do to work it off?" You know? But I, I notice a lot of shows these days, these people just live in these apartments, they just go out, they just, nobody says, "Oh, I can't, you know, go or I can't do this because my budget or my money." They've forgotten to show the reality, nobody goes to the bathroom, you know? There's, you know, not all life is, you know, roses and sunshine, but, you know, roses need dirt to grow, and we need to see the dirt, so I think there's a disconnect. And I think the school wants us to believe, the school district, the leadership wants us to believe that, um, things just miraculously happen. No, we need to see how the, how the bread is made, so to speak. And, um, just posting a budget isn't transparency because, you know, that's what you put out, you know? Somebody, I think somebody really needs to look at the books, see where the money is going, who's spending it, you know, who makes those decisions. Yeah, saying they put it to a vote, mm, you know? But anyway, I could say, go on, there's a lot that needs to be, the sun needs to be let in. The sun is the greatest cleanser, um, so, but I'm sorry, I still keep going back to the children and, um, I, you know, I think maybe we need to have a parallel school board with kids on it. And, um, and even if they don't have a, like, real voting power, but they are the ones that, the information goes before, and I don't mean just teenagers. You know, because from the mouth of babes, um, if you go, "Hey, we wanna do this," and, you know, kids build sandcastles. But if you go, "Oh, I wanna put a moat in, I wanna put," you know, they'll, they'll give you all these ideas. And just because it comes from a five-year-old doesn't mean it's a bad idea. So there might need to be children's input, you know, the parents, you know? You know, I don't know, I don't, can't speak for all parents, but keep a connection with your children. Don't ever lose the ability to share their day with them, you know? And if that, if you need help learning how to do that, there's people to help you learn it, but just ask questions. Not interrogate, just, "Hey, you know, how was math today?" You know? So when they're little and they grow and you're still asking those questions, they don't feel like you're insinuating yourself into their life, and they're too cool for that. So, um, yeah, I think a child's school board would be very beneficial in how they see what they're getting and why do we have to listen to you, grownups? You know, if they know why they have to listen to us or what's going on, you know, they might understand better. Kinda like knowing our constitution, you live in the United States. You know, so little of our constitution is taught in schools these days, and it's so important. But, um, anyway, so like I said, our kids really need to be involved, respected, communicated with, protected. And I don't mean protected in the way they don't dare to try or get a skinny. But know that when they're at school, they're not just protected by the walls, but they're protected from people with their own agendas, protected from the prejudices of the adults in the school. Because there's, I'm sorry, there's just, we have so many great kids and I don't like to see their light get put out because somebody else has imposed their perception on them. So, like I said, we just need to work with our kids. I was a little confused when I first saw it because, um, having served in the military, worked in various jobs, impacted by corporate streamlining programs like Lean Six Sigma, which are always looking for ways to streamline, cut money, and make people behave what essentially turns out to be robots. They try to turn people into production-type entities instead of people. So like civic awareness, I, I really think that's important, but that gets taught in social studies. When you teach social studies or history or whatever topic you wanna couch it under, when you say, talk about the founding of our country. The founders of our country died broke and penniless, you know? You know, I know there's some that gave their money in the house of their family, but the ones who really sacrificed to found our country and give us our constitution, they died broke and penniless and hunted, you know, by people who didn't want change or they didn't want the people to have a voice. So civic awareness, hello? You know, you can't get a better example than that, and if you teach that in social studies, well, why do they care? Because they got tired of t- Because they got tired of tyranny, oh, what's tyranny? Well, tyranny is where one person tells everybody how things are gonna be, and that's the way it's gonna be. And we're gonna take all your money and you're gonna do it, otherwise you're gonna be in prison or dead, you know? Not much of a choice there, um, you know, okay, fast forward, well. Founding of the country, go up, Boston Tea Party, yeah, okay, keep going, World War One, why do we care, World War Two, why do we care? You're just like, there's a M- Marine Corps joke, I don't know who started it, who said it, but, um. They were over in France for some delegation of something and the French guys like. Why, we have to speak English at these things, and you know, the, the Marine general says, well, we arranged it so you weren't speaking German. You know, so, oh, well, why did a bunch of people, people care from the United States to go over to fight a war? That hadn't reached American soil until Japan, well. Because they cared, they had a sense of civic duty, there you go, right there, you've taught American history, world history, and you've taught civic awareness. Why does it need a separate category? I don't understand, but. If civic awareness is part of the kids' curriculum. What are the adults doing for their civic awareness? What are you giving to the community? What is the school board doing? Because clearly, they aren't aware. Of their own community if they're trying to impose things and not getting. The word out and getting feedback from every parent in the school. If you send report cards home and they have to be signed by the parents, something like this. Needs to go home to every family and the parents need to sign off on it, send it back, their questions and. The thing I have doesn't really explain anything, that sound, you know, sounds all great, it looks like a corporate plan. Multi-pronged attack, whatever you wanna call it, but some of these things are taught through the course of the day. Not a specific agenda, uh, future focus, goal-oriented. Post-secondary plan of intent, plan of intent. Wow, we could go into the physiology development of a child, but. Again, this puts everything on the child, what is the school doing to show them? Opportunities and. Ways they can go out into the world, because at eighteen, you have your whole future ahead of you, so if you graduate. And you already know what you're going to do, I'm gonna guess that's gonna change twenty times by the time. You've finished turning nineteen, um, my, I'm a great example of that, I knew I wanted to do something, I wanted to serve. My community. Did that while I was in high school, I was a member of the key club, participated in a leadership class before school, um, volunteered afterwards. But, um, I ended up serving in the Marine Corps, I chose to serve in the Marine Corps, to serve the larger of my community. Um, the, and I was in foster care, so let me share that too, I was in foster care. And I chose to serve my community by going in the Marine Corps. My classmates had parents, families. And there were ones that their parents were paying them to spend four years in college. By the time I finished boot camp, thirteen weeks later, one of them had already dropped out of college. One of them whose parents were giving them money to start a business, dropped the job, didn't, it was too difficult, they couldn't hang. Whatever, so there, my high school is littered with stories like this where me being the foster kid. They were telling me I wasn't going to finish boot camp, there's no way the foster kid was going to do X, Y, or Z. Well, I committed four years, so I knew my next four years were committed, but. There was no dropping out that semester, so, but that's me, I knew, not every child. Knows they wanna do this, that, or the other, but, um, so saying they have an intent, uh. You know, sounds nice, but, um, you're asking a child who's. Still not fully developed as a person, telling them what they wanna do for the rest of our lives, but, um, um. So like I said, um, there's, some of these things are just naturally taught through the course of, um. School, so creating a plan for it, sounds like it's more should be. Instead of a plan for the kids, it should be a plan for the teachers, um, and make it their job requirements. Um, which is another thing I still haven't seen here, um, where is the expectation of the adults? In the child's community, that you're putting everything on the kid, where, what are, what is the school board gonna do? To make sure this is implemented on the adults' part, because you can put this all out there, but, um. Um, kinda like the, uh, school motto is respect, honor, and succeed. Hmm, success, what is that? That's kind of a lot to put on a kid too, but, um. What do you, what does success mean, and how is that being explained? Striving for excellence, hmm, not really clear on what that really means, but, um. Plan of intent, community service, uh, community service sounds great, but we are a very rural community. So who's gonna transport these kids to and from, pay for the gas money? Um, vehicle maintenance to make sure the kids can get their, um, community service done, um. If you live in town, that's great, you can walk or bicycle to and from. Um, I don't think we need any more white crosses on the side of highways for kids trying to get to. Um, where they need to get to, because their parents are at work after all, the parents are working to pay the taxes to support the school. Especially now with teachers getting pay raises by the state, so, again. Child safety, here's another great example of that, um. The, I'm sorry, there's a lot in here. That should happen through the course of the day, healthy living, that's, um, to me, that is, uh. That was, um, health science classes when I was in high school, it was a health class, every quarter we dressed something different or whatever. Um, digital portfolio, understanding risk, um, as a person who grew up. Prior to Apple coming on the market, um. I learned how to do long division, math problems, the long way, now there's computer programs that do it. And I took a class to learn how to put that into a computer. But it's so frustrating to me that I have to tell a computer how to do something I already know how to do. So what happens during a power outage, and you need to do that? Oh, generator, yeah, no generators, no power, now this person's an engineer. And they've, they've been taught to rely on the computers, what are we doing? To make sure they can do this as they stand alone, on a job site, no power, no computers, whatever, um. But, um. So there's like, there's just so much that the school, I don't think should be teaching, because if you. Yeah, the school already restricts the electronics, so there's not, you're not worried about. Kids using the wrong websites during the school day, so, um. What is a school really teaching them, um, cause in order to teach them, you'd have to open up the internet service for them to explore more. Um, as far as emotional maturity. There's some adults I know that aren't emotionally mature, um, and that's something that comes from. Being held accountable, being told no when necessary, being, um. Heard when, when you behave a certain way, hey, why are you doing that, um, but again. That's not the school's job, if the school's job isn't listening to them. When they're saying, hey, I'm interested in being a ballerina, firefighter, whatever, why? Is their emotional maturity now all of a sudden an interest to the? To the school, but again, that's not something that should be addressed specifically in the classroom. Life-ready, there's some adults that still aren't ready for life, because they're just not, they're, um, there's. Everybody has their road to walk and making it a requirement to graduate, who's gonna evaluate that? You know, I mean, what kind of a mark do you give someone, okay, yeah, yeah. You sat there and you gave all the right answers, please help me graduate. Do you want a kid like that? No, that's not a person, we want a person who regardless. Of where they are emotionally, economically, educationally. They're gonna graduate because they met the academic requirements. Reading, writing, arithmetic, literature, history, math, science, the. Soft skills are important, but if the teachers and the administrators and the board are modeling that. The kids are gonna learn it, so best thing we can do, get rid, get rid of, get rid of this, uh. Plan that only a handful of parents have responded to, and, um. Start seeing kids for who they are, because if you. Interact with them in an academic way, which is what school is, academic. I didn't have an email address until. I think it was two thousand and one or two thousand and two when I went back on active duty. And only then I got one because the Navy required me to have one to communicate with me, I'm like, I really don't want one. And I had to have some twenty-something, I was only thirty-something, but had to have a twenty-something show me how to get an email address. Again, community, I didn't go sit in a classroom and somebody teach me how to use the computer or whatever, but I picked it up. But knowing how to treat people with dignity and respect. Will get you a lot farther than knowing how to use a computer that could fail you when the power goes out, um. So if you treat people with dignity and respect, you don't need a computer to do that, um, and we've already learned that. Computers have been the biggest hindrance in communication and humanity. Civic awareness and all the good stuff, so if you just keep it people to people. You're gonna have a good community and coming up with some corporate plan. Is not gonna make better high school students or better, um, members of our community.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
So, let's, let's pretend that ninety-five percent of parents took the survey, and like, let's say. All the parents, ninety-five percent of them said, yes, we love this new graduate of a, of a.
Profile.
Profile of a graduate, right? And it's coming to you, let's assume you're on the school board. Do you still present the same questions, like, do you still, would you still explain that to parents at the meeting? Hey, I, we understand ninety-five percent of you voting yes. I wanna ask these questions in front of everyone so that everyone understands what that yes means.
Yeah, I would.
Does that make sense?
No, it does, um, because they've said yes, and like I said, it looks nice.
Yeah.
But it's still saying what's expected of the child, what, what the child is expected to achieve, accomplish, or. The burden is on them, there's nothing in this that says what is the burden of the school board? The burden of the teacher, where is the expectations that, what the child is gonna get? For going to achieve this, what, what are they going to get? To make sure this can happen, is a teacher gonna come pick them up at home and drive them to their community, whatever service thing? And exactly how many community service things are available in Roundup? Okay, so the FFA kids can double dip and use their FFA time for school, oh, that's fair, no, it's not fair, so. What, now you're gonna give somebody who's an FFA or 4H more community service? So you, double dipping, being able to use their community service for FFA or 4H for school, not fair. So they get to use it twice, that, that's, that starts the slippery slope of, um, of, uh. What's the word, nepotism, um, there's other language I could use as far as. I'm sorry, I'm, the word is slipping out of my, corruption, um, because, you know, when somebody gets credit. For doing one thing twice, that's not fair, so again. So the kids that don't have FFA or 4H or whatever, um, how are they gonna do that? Because they're also minors. So they can't run heavy equipment, they can't run meat slicers, they, you know, um. There's so much they can't do because they are children, that's gonna severely limit, now you put it into after-school and weekends. Okay, and then we add weather in, you know, so where are these kids gonna get twenty-four, twenty-five hours? Of time and document it, so say they do something nice while they're on family vacation or, you know, help somebody or whatever. They didn't bring their documentation with them, and that person or whoever could sign whatever documentation that that person didn't, again. Getting proof for doing something good for your community is another way of saying, I want a paycheck. You know, when you do something for your community. It shouldn't be because you want to get something out of it, that's where the selflessness of community service comes in, um. Anyway, like I said, um, there's just so many things about this that, um. There needs to be more information, and if it goes to a vote and it's pushed through. I think that'll be a disservice to our community, our parents, and definitely our children, um, putting. And for people that know horses and cattle, that'd be the equivalent of putting, uh. The load of a twenty-mule Borax team on the shoulders of two mules, you know. It's just not, not gonna work out, and shouldn't children be having a childhood right now? I think we've gotten so far away from children. Having childhoods that, there's commercials on how to make time for play. Scheduling and playtime, that didn't happen when I was a child, you were a child. My life wasn't great, but still, when I played, I didn't go, oh, it's Tuesday at three o'clock, let's go play. No, it was a part of life, just like phys ed and recess. I had great experience in school because I had a great gym teacher who. Did different activities, scooter, square dancing, tag, uh, it's all with the ball, anyway, so, but I remember that. And I had recess, that's how I got one of those scars on my head, I hit it on the jungle gym, you know, so, but. Trying to make children into something or make them follow a plan. Is negating the whole purpose of childhood, fun, exploration, challenges, um. Yeah, I, I don't think the parents are aware of this, and I think something needs to be sent home. And signed, and there also needs to be something to say what the teachers and the administration's gonna do if they implement this. To make, how, how is that gonna happen, what is that gonna look like? Again, we're gonna print more stuff and more, that's more money spent, um. And money right now is gonna be a big issue, school teachers are getting raises, great. Our community, the mine is closing down, it's getting smaller, there's less money. Um, other communities across Montana are experiencing issues with their mines, so that money schools were getting from the mines. What's gonna replace that, so if teachers are getting more money out of the budget. And you're gonna start printing more stuff and all this other stuff, um, like I said, just doesn't seem. Like there's a good plan, again, kids, plan for the kids, what's the plan for the adults? So more information needs to come about, so.
We have seen an increase in student behavior issues, teacher shortages. Lack of communication between our community and administrators specifically. What are your thoughts and or solutions to these topics that you most certainly, if elected, will face? And any final thoughts?
Um, ac- accountability is required for any successful. Organization, community, or country, much like our judicial system. We know if you kill somebody, you're, you're gonna go to jail, you're gonna go to prison. You have a car accident and you are drinking, you are gonna be arrested and charged with a DUI. You know, whatever the behavior, there is an accountability to that behavior. Even if you get away for, for a little while or don't get caught right away. There's an accountability that goes on eventually that, you know, well. You were the person that did this, it was ten years ago, but if the statute of limitations still there, we're gonna hold you accountable, um. There's trials going on right now that are national news. Because of accountability and these people knew. As adults, not mentally challenged, impaired or otherwise. That these behaviors they acted on would receive repercussions. Criminal in nature, yes, but nonetheless, they knew there would be, they'd be held accountable for their behavior. In the school system, we don't have the luxury of the judicial system, but we do have. A way of implementing the same thing, just like there need to be rules and guidelines for substitute teachers. I'm sure there are rules and guidelines and dress codes, behavior for teachers. In any organization, children or not, whether they're in the home, in the community, in school. A certain behavior is expected, respect for others. And if kids are gonna be in the school. They need to have respect, not just for themselves, they need to have respect for their classmates and respect for their teachers. And thus showing they respect their parents and everything they've taught them. Um, the governor had that letter sent out like for cell phones in the classroom. Well, that is where it is incumbent upon the teachers in that classroom. To make sure the cell phones are put away. Great. Teachers can make sure the cell phones are put away. What happens when they aren't? Well, that's where the school, the teachers, administrators and their parents say. First infraction, this happens, it gets taken away, get, they get it back at the end of class. Happens again in another class, regardless, that's your second infraction. Happens again yet in another class, third infraction. And they need to be reported to the administrator. If you're gonna keep track of kids' grades, you're gonna keep track of. Whether they did twenty-four hours of community service, you need to keep track of. Who is violating the school policy on cell phones in the classroom. So if someone is recording in a classroom, that's a public school. And some people can argue, again legally, you could say, oh, it's a public place. Well, it's a classroom. And if somebody doesn't give their consent to be recorded, they shouldn't be. Because they didn't choose to be put on the internet. So there's a lot of stuff that goes on the internet that puts people at risk. And if the teachers can't just simply say, this is the rule. You will follow it because we have said so, then. There, the teachers aren't respecting the kids to learn. And if they're not gonna learn about simply putting their cellphone away, how's the teacher expect to teach them the curriculum or the, the topic for the class? So again, this is where, just like everything, fighting. Uh, if I cursed at a teacher, I should expect there would be re- repercussions for that and I would be held accountable for my behavior. Um, if kids wanna be able to drive to school, that's great. That's a privilege, that is not a right. Having cell phones on their person is a privilege, it is not a right. Yes, they pay for it, their parents pay for it, but just like driving a vehicle, you have to drive on the right side of the road. You can't drive on the left side of the road, otherwise accidents may have death, why not, but um. This all starts from respect. And if the kids aren't taught respect, they don't learn respect and they don't exemplify respect. So back to the elementary school. You know, if the teachers, the administrators, the adults aren't respecting the kids for who they are, then. How can the kids learn respect? Um, but if the parents and the teachers aren't working together. As part of the community to educate children. There's no communication, how do you expect to enforce it? So there has to be accountability. If you do X, Y, Z, this will happen and one, two, three strikes, whatever. And that's what needs to happen. If you're gonna try to hold kids accountable for some pie in the sky academic. Chart and goals, you have to start with the small things. You know, no gum, no graffiti, no cell phones, whatever um. And leaving campus for lunch, it's a privilege, not a right, so because. Children's safety is no longer the school's responsibility. Sort of, when the kid leaves school during the day, but the kid gets in an accident. While they're supposed to be at school. Some good lawyers could make that the school's responsibility, so. And you know, so lawsuits are a real possibility. Montana isn't as litigious as some of the schools back east are. But um accountability and if we wanna hold kids accountable, we have to hold the adults accountable. And that goes back to rules and regulations. You can tell the kids they have to have all these boxes checked to graduate. What are the adults doing to make sure they can graduate? Are they making sure there's no cell phones in the classroom? Not just getting calls, but recording, you know. Taking other people's likeness without their permission, you know, we live in a community where we have a lot of Amish people. And they don't like their pictures taken. Do we take it just to go, you know, eh, we took your picture? No, we respect their right. Not to have their picture or likeness taken, and if so, it's done from a distance, but again, respect. And seems like that's what Roundup really needs because um. I've been on the substitute list now and the school year is almost over. They didn't call me, but they called somebody who was in our community for three months. If that by the time they applied, so, but instead of calling me, a person in the community who's available. Um, they called somebody who was only in our community for a short time. And I keep seeing ads in the paper where they need. They have a need supposedly and we're paying for those advertisements, is that where our budget money is going? Um, so isn't it a little kick in the teeth when you have people in the community that are on the substitute list? And they're not getting called, um, and when the administrators and the. People at the school board office can't answer that question and they throw the blame. On the high school or the elementary school, well, it's up to those people in the school to call. Well, why aren't they calling? Um, you know, you can almost imagine a conversation being had that. Oh, she asks questions. Oh, she sends kids to the office. You know, she holds us accountable, so we don't want her here. So again, it falls under equal opportunity, um discrimination, whatever. And if, if I see that and feel that as an adult, I can only imagine. When children are in a position of inverted power and don't feel like they have a voice. They are going to experience the same. Something's not right here. I don't matter. Nobody respects me, nobody cares that I'm here. Um, so. Uh, wow, there's, there is just so much for the school board to do. Um, and I, it is my hope, if I get elected, that um. There'll be more transparency, there'll be more. Sleight of hand that isn't happening, um, because when you have. The people on the school board that are the parents in the school. They're looking out for their children. They're looking out for how this is gonna affect their children. I imagine it won't be long after their kids graduate that they no longer wanna sit on the school board. Um, and it's funny, somebody asked me that, what are you, what are, what are the requirements to serve on the school board? I think it's like three things, being an American citizen, a member of the community and over eighteen. I may have the numbers wrong, but um something to that, three basic things. So there are so many parents out there that are required. And you know, so that's the requirement, much like running for president of the United States. There's an age and citizenship, citizenship requirement. There's nothing that says you have to have a college education, that you have to have gone to a certain Ivy League school, you know, blah, so. I hope more parents will get involved. More parents will run for the school board, more candidates, more people in the community will run for the school board. Um, I just keep, in my mind, I keep hearing things that. What can we do to make things better for the kids? What can we do? And it isn't about turning. School into Disneyland. They need to learn that when you're in a place, people. Christians community, right? They go to church, they don't record their cell phones, they're not talking on the phone. They're showing reverence and respect for going to church. Schools should have much of that same reverence and respect, but if the adults aren't showing that reverence and respect. The kids aren't going to, um, and I know there are some teachers that look at their cellphone or even if they're only reading a text message. You know, can it wait forty-five minutes? If it can't, that's what the school office is for. The school office can say it's an emergency, you know, can you please come to the office or send somebody to watch your classroom? So again, the adults need to be setting the example, leading from example. Leaders lead from the front, they don't lead from the, the back pushing the troops forward, so um. There, there's just so much my hopes, but um I also know only one person, so I know I can't do it alone. So it's my hope that if I get elected, that the parents will reach out to me if they, if they will. You know, listen to me, um, be, I, I hope to be accessible to the students, to the parents, to the community. Um, because fiscal responsibility. While all these changes are going on in our community, the budget's going through, the money for teachers is changing um. And our kids are still the ones pulling the load. I don't see where the adults are doing their part yet and after all. We're the ones the kids are supposed to emulate, aren't we supposed to be? Their heroes, the ones they look out and go, I remember back when Mister Thompson was my math teacher. And you know, he helped me become a, get a, get a scholarship for STEM at MIT, whatever, you know. They should be the one, we should be the ones pushing them up, not pushing them forward into the, to line of fire and um. I'm sorry, my heart just breaks for kids to have to go out into the world, leaving their community and feel like nobody's ever had their back. Um, and I see that, you know, they, they just feel. So ambivalent about what to do next, they're almost frozen and how to move forward with their future because. Job is one thing, but the competence to, to dare to try um is a whole nother animal um. Sorry, our kids need more from us and I hope I can help give them more um. And I want the parents, you know, it's great, send them to school, but. When it comes down to it, we need you to stand up for your kids and it may not seem like a lot, but. It is, it means a lot when um. When the parents show up and, and explain. To them, this is why I'm doing it, this is why it matters, you know, and you may not. Be able to see the forest for the trees right now, but it, it is so important that um. That we're there for them and I could go on, but this, I'm sure this interview has already gone on longer than. We expected it to, no matter how wonderful of editing job is done, but um. If I'm elected. I, I wanna help, so uh, so um, suggestion box or something, whatever. Um, reach out through the newspaper to get word to me if need be, um. I will respect competences, but our children really need us to be the grownups in the world. And, and not the power brokers, so.
So Sabrina, to wrap it up, if someone was to vote for you, were to vote for you, what are they voting for?
They're voting for a person who um puts others before themselves. I'm running, I don't have to, I don't have kids in the school, I don't have any agenda. For my kid, because I don't have one. I have an agenda for children. And not just for the children they are today, right now, whatever grade they're in, but for. The adult they're gonna be and when they're my age and they're coping with life or, you know, whatever stage they're coping with life. And their inner child is going, I wish somebody had my back or whatever, so they don't feel like. Their whole life, nobody's had their back. There is, and I, I run into people like that um. Sorry, there's just, there's so much connected with this when you, when you um. Work with a child, you're not, you know, you go, oh yeah, they, they got a great, they got an A in the class, great. Hey, what else did they get out of that class? Did they get that you were supportive of them? Did they, you know, and. Doesn't have to be, you know, you're standing there with pom poms in the corner, but um. Did the teacher hear you? Like, I still remember uh my eighth grade teacher, Mrs. Shear, no, not eighth grade. Tenth grade teacher, Mrs. Shear. She would yell at a student when they got the answer wrong, instead of saying. Did you understand it? She would literally yell and I remember her because of that. I remember a math teacher who didn't understand how I could just do math in my head. She thought I was cheating and then sent me to work with a tutor and he's like, oh, you can do it in your head. And but I had to start showing the math teacher the work. I'm like, okay. Takes longer, but okay, but again, I still had two math teachers that I remember to this day by their names. Not because they were good teachers, but because of their adverse impact on my love of math. I loved math, but I was like, you know what? I have to deal with these people, I don't wanna deal with it. But I had, there's so many more teachers that were great examples. Um, Mister Bolton was my, one of my English teachers, um, Mister Crowley was another English teacher. They pushed you, they challenged you, you know, um, Mrs. Petersak, another teacher um. There's so many that I have that are Mister Roberts from history. They um, they inspired, not because. They were focusing on one child, but they were the best person, the best teacher, the best example. Of a person, even if it was just for that finite time we had him for class. And they didn't impose their opinions on you, they didn't impose their beliefs on you, they didn't. Whatever, whatever they did or didn't do, I remember them because they were good examples. Of people, teachers, knowledge, resource, Mister Barnett, one of my high school professor or. Teachers for history. I was Orange County, New York, farming community. Brought the first Muslim person I ever encountered into our class. And he didn't. Control our questions, he didn't control. The information, he let it happen organically and naturally, but what he showed us is there are other people in the world. Beside us, he had us solve, he had us try and solve. The famine problem in, in Africa, at the time when I was growing up, you know, starvation, babies. Not having enough food, people overproducing was an issue, so he gave us the problem and we solved it and then he go, okay, well you. You just violated their human rights, you just, you know, and he would, so we'd have to go back to the drawing board and try to solve it, um, so. Um, I'm sorry, I lost track, but these are the people that I remember because. They didn't do anything more than teach. And they taught not curriculum, yes, but they taught. By how they handled themselves in the classroom, we respected that. Um, I had a teacher who dumped a girl's purse. On the desk because he was trying to demonstrate some kind of point. She didn't do anything wrong, nothing happened, but for whatever point he was trying to prove, he just dumped her purse out. A young teenage girl's purse in a high school classroom. I'll save the, the explanation of all the contents, but he violated her space. He violated her property to teach something. That's not teaching. He just taught how to violate somebody's civil rights. He just taught. How to violate somebody's property, how somebody had to trespass on some, and that she was supposed to just put up with it. Because she was a student, wrong. Luckily, that student had a parent figure in her life. He didn't, I don't know if it was the best way to handle it, but I think it was the appropriate way to handle it because. If you're gonna turn a young lady's purse upside down in a classroom. Shouldn't that teacher be exposed to the same kind of treatment? So that parent came to the classroom and made sure he dressed down that teacher in front of the students. Nicely and respectfully, but let him know that you ever touch my child's things. Or another child's things in this classroom, there will be accountability. my child's things or another child's things in this classroom, there will be accountability. That teacher never left the backside of their desk again the rest of that school year because the point was made, you disrespected my child. And you, you know, but it was, it was handled well, but it was done. The girl had to put up with whatever embarrassment, ridicule, not just outside, not just in that classroom, but throughout the school because that teacher dumped purse on her desk and the things that rolled onto the floor. So um, like I said, that's the kind of teachers we want and people we want in our lives that are gonna stand up for our kids, that are gonna encourage them to be the best. Just show it and by being it, you know, um I was still in touch with my high school principal until a few years ago when he retired from whatever he was doing at the time and decided to, to you know, retire, retire for the third time. Um, so um yeah, to have those kind of relationships and friendships and communication into my fifties tells me they did something right, you know, that somebody wants to stay in touch with them. You know, so when kids need letters of recommendations, when they're in their twenties, long after they've left high school, I don't know anybody now, oh, wait a minute, my high school teacher, my elementary, or my leader in whatever organization, um you know, they they had my back, you know, and here I am, twenty-something, you know, they still have my back, great, you know, and and then they pay that forward, you know, so when somebody else they encounter needs somebody to have their back, they do it. You know, talk about being in the Middle East or foreign soil and, you know, your high school teacher, principal's still writing you to make sure you're doing okay and that you're still alive. You know, that speaks volumes, you know, um, and just little ways of being there for somebody, you know. Anyway, like I said, we need more of that in our community. I'm sorry, I don't even know if I answered that question, I went down a rabbit hole.
You did great. Just final thoughts, like if they vote for you, they're voting for?
They're voting for a person who um has all that, you know, that I have the good memories and the bad examples of educators that I grew up with. Um, even the educators in college that let's say they were lacking, but as an adult, I knew I had my voice and I was able to speak up then, you know, um. They weren't giving me an education for what I was paying for, so I made sure that they needed to step up their game if they um, were gonna be considered, they called themselves college professors. Um, so I bring a lot to the table and um, when I applied for the um substitute position, they basically gave me an application that was the equivalent of like your first job working as a bagger at a grocery store. No offense, but um, back when I was growing up, that was, you know, the high school kid's job that you know, they could get at fifteen or sixteen. And then, you know, move up and when they were old enough to drive themselves and whatnot, but um they didn't ask if I had, you know, much of an education or my experience. So I gave it to them, I wrote, gave, brought in a copy of my resume. That's all great as far as I've been there, done that type stuff jobs, but I think it's the intangible stuff that I bring to the table. That people are gonna get and I think they'll find valuable, um and hopefully as beneficial as it's been to me in executing my day-to-day life because um there's some things that can't be taught, they're learned, um, because they're encountered and you can't force encounters, you know. Um, anyway, um, so when you get me, you get somebody who doesn't who isn't maybe the old guard of Montana, that's, you know, a lot of people worry about, oh, they're not from Montana. Well, that's great. I'm an American citizen. I grew up here, I served my country, um and I try to keep serving my communities wherever I live. Anyway, so people I know in this community, they're good people. And I think they're a little done with the status quo and having to bear the weight of the intimidation and whatever the other word is that makes people feel oppressed and they don't have a voice in their community. You have a voice. If you vote for me, I wanna hear your voice.